We will call this meeting to order in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Okay, bring a brief song.
Good morning. Glad everyone is here. Today is August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this is the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is a public forum, and we do have a call-in option provided. The meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes taken, and our meetings are also being livestreamed. So if you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to around three minutes. And please share if you're speaking on the behalf of others. So welcome, everyone, for being here today. Are there any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
Yes, I do. First of all, I would like to recognize all of my wrong-handed people as today as national left-hand. So where did you pull that out of? There's a lot of people that just can't get it right. So this is a letter of an accommodation from Sergeant Terry LaRocella at the dispatcher's office. It is with great pleasure and immense gratitude that we commend this Patrick Kim, when ever exceptional performance and unwavering composure during a critical armed subject call on August seventh, twenty twenty-five. At seventeen fifty-nine hours, when the initial armed call came in, dispatcher when that demonstrated immediate and decisive action. Within one minute at eighteen hundred hours, she had Hamilton Police Department units responding and providing a crucial description of suspect and vehicle. Her ability to quickly gather and disseminate vital information, including updates regarding the male's actions, and his association with the Red Pontiac with the partial plate at eighteen oh one hours, was instrumental in preparing responding officers, preparing responding officers throughout the unfolding incident. Kim maintained a remarkably calm and clear demeanor on the radio, her precise and continuous updates, even its numerous other calls about the same situation, came in, allowed officers to approach a dangerous situation with the necessary information and ensure their safety and successful apprehension of the subject. The speed with which PPD units located and detained the subject, having him a gun pointed by eighteen oh three and detained by eighteen oh five is a direct reflection of Kim's outstanding dispatching skills and her ability to effectively manage a high-stress situation. Dispatcher when its actions on this incident are a testament to her dedication, professionalism, and the critical role she plays in public safety. Thank you, and this is from Sergeant Terry LaRocella. Thank you, and nice job, Kim. Very nice job. That's all I have.
Just real quick, I want to just thank the Fair Board and everybody, all the volunteers for a successful fair, the sale committee. I think it was really very well-done fair, and the weather helped. So I know a lot of people in this room were at the fair, and so I know I saw Captain Primer in the room. So her staff did an amazing job, so I wanted to just thank everybody involved.
Beat me to it. I agree. It was a great week. It was great to see Umatilla County there in so many different ways, but also see so many people from not only Umatilla County, but from across the area. And it was, I would say, it's highly successful. Anyway, thank you. Need more correspondence? Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
The approval of the minutes from July sixteenth and July twenty-second of twenty twenty-five.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Additions to the agenda. Do we have any public input or recognition of visitors? Do we have any public input, but from anything that isn't on our agenda today? Move right into business items. BLM update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this morning, for the opportunity to update you guys. I do have printed out quarterly reports. Hopefully, you guys are receiving them, but if I may, I will present them to you. On the back, there's an additional sheet, which I just received yesterday, and I will discuss it momentarily. Sarah Sherman, Baker Field Manager for the county of Bakersfield Management. If you need my address, it has changed since June of twenty-three of this year. Our office on H Street in Baker City did close, and we have since co-located with our National Historic Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, just five miles outside of town. So the address, if you need it, is two-two-two-six-seven Oregon Highway eighty-six, Dylan, Baker City. So we closed that office. We had notification in April that the lease was going to end. We closed that office in June, which was like a Friday on the twenty-third, and then immediately set up our shop at the interpretive center the next day. So we didn't miss a beat. There's no loss in operations. If you need to come find us, and we're just on top of the hill. We posted. We need to do further communications, please let me know. But I wanted to make sure, if you guys were looking for us, you knew where to find us. Yeah, that's a big business update, absolutely. Another big update is our South Fork of the Walla Walla, area of critical environmental concern project is out for public comment period as of Monday, August eleventh. It'll be out for thirty days for the public to review the draft analysis for this project and what we're proposing. And management decisions for this area includes road construction on the BLM Road seven-six-nine-nine to the trailhead, and also includes some other recreation, non-recreation access updates in there as well. So for thirty days, it'll be out for public comment period. We are doing a virtual public information meeting for folks next Wednesday. It'll be on Zoom. We'll be able to present information. We know there's been a lot of questions and updates, wanting more information, because this project has been going on since the flood in twenty twenty. And we know there's going to be people that have a lot of information and backstory, and a lot of people coming new into the area and finding this little gem and wanting to know more. So we'll hold that meeting Wednesday, five p.m. to seven p.m., again, virtually. And we look forward to seeing that we'll come up, be able to answer all of those. It will be recorded, and we will post it online. All of this information can be found on our e-planning websites, planning.gov, or if you just search e-planning BLM, it should pop up. Just link to that. Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to do that. Absolutely. So that, again, will happen next Wednesday. The comment period will close on September tenth, and then we'll take all of those comments, substantive comments, help inform our decision-making, so if it can tell us what information we might be lacking, if there's better information that we can include in our document to make sure we're as current and up-to-date and transparent as possible. With that, we'll hopefully take a month to digest all of those comments coming in, and we'll be able to review a final document in October, hopefully being able to present a final in November. Any questions on that project? Thank you so much for being involved as a cooperating agency. It is very important for us. There's a lot of folks involved, right? It's not just BLM, but it's the county, with Forest Park being right next door, as well as the Forest Service and other agencies. Thank you.
No, it's good.
One thing of pleasure, but.
It's been an opportunity.
It's been an opportunity, and thank you so much for helping us.
No, thank you, guys, for all your hard work. I've said that before.
Other things going on. Our work really hasn't changed since the new administration coming in. We've shifted priorities to focus a lot on mineral production, so that's a lot of my work outside of the South Fork of the Walla Walla project. And we should be wrapping up a couple of small-scale gold mining operations in Baker County, and with that comes a new one that will be starting up here soon. We've seen a decline in renewable energy. I know that a couple of projects in your area have come up, batteries, storage facilities, some other renewable energy projects. We've received applications. We've asked additional information, and we haven't since heard back from any of those proponents. But just wanted to make sure you guys are aware. Again, our work hasn't changed, but our focus has. So we're really doing more energy development, especially in my southern office in the Mau here with the lithium and the geothermal and the high-scale gold mining. So if you have questions on those projects, hopefully that quarterly report can help you. But if not, feel free to give me a call. We can point you in the right direction.
I saw your geothermal lease was fairly successful. I thought that was probably pretty good.
Yeah.
Like four hundred and eighty-five grand.
We're counting it as a win for our district, specifically here, for sure.
Question I have, Sarah.
Yes.
Going back to a previous subject. What have you received new guidance on? And I'm not talking about forest stuff. I'm talking about our property, the properties within Umatilla County, the fifty-acre, twenty-acre, two-hundred-and-fifty-acre. Have you received new guidance on the disposition of those properties?
No, I haven't. Right, we've been encouraged that if the lands are in here for disposal, and that's something that you all are interested in, if you want to propose that to us, that's absolutely a little bit necessary.
Has that list, or has that process changed?
That process hasn't changed. Those lands were evaluated in our resource management plan in nineteen eighty-nine. I don't believe any of our land tenure has changed since then. We do do five-year evaluations of our plan, but nothing since this change.
I don't want that, your next five years.
They completed the last five years in twenty twenty-two, so it'll be twenty twenty-seven when we do it again. But in regards to that question, this is like a larger overview. Again, our business is shifting a little bit as far as priority, as well as being able to operate under new authorities. The streamline and cut down on our process. So we've started adopting other DOI agencies, categorical exclusion authorities. These are project proposals or routine work that other agencies actually do that we can now incorporate into our authority and be able to manage those projects as well. So that's really exciting. It is really new, and so we're taking some time to make sure we're not misinterpreting any of the authorities, that we're not guided off too far, wanting to get a lot.
That goes to the real question.
Yeah.
At the national level, BLM DOI has a very strong direction to streamline those processes, but it hasn't. You're saying.
It hasn't affected my office quite yet. But yes, at a larger conversation, the Bureau is looking for ways to improve and streamline our business and getting things done more timely by incorporating other agencies and how they do routine work into how we can.
And that would include everything from the EIS and EPOS to everything.
Yes, yes. There is also more guidance as far as streamlining the larger projects as well. So the environmental assessments and our environmental impact statements, the larger projects that can't be kind of cut and streamlined and on more or less checklist where we check in all of our resources and say, no, they don't apply. For the larger projects, I will say, public involvement will look different in the coming future. It is the authorized officer, either myself or my district manager, will be making the decision on how long to conduct public involvement. So scoping periods where we try to incorporate public engagement early on and helping us with alternatives. That might go away. It might be that we only open it for five to ten days. It really depends. And again, it's up to the discretion of the deciding official for how long. So it's more of our risk management, where if we think there's projects where people are going to be really involved and really want to have their voice heard, which strongly encourage, we make that aware and upfront with everyone as soon as possible on those dates that we're going to be conducting them. Again, it's not going to be the fifteen or thirty-day kind of standard that we've done in the past, but it will look different, so we can keep moving forward.
Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. Any other questions?
No, no. I just have a comment.
Okay.
It always makes me a little nervous when we cut back time where the public can comment.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, people don't get the word, or when they get it, late. And I understand where you're coming from, from your perspective, because you want to keep the process moving, because it takes a long time to get through. And on the other hand, you hate to cut off any time where the public can be involved. And I just think that that's something to think about. Yeah, I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, too. Thank you. Anything else?
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dispatch payment, RIMs.
Sorry, Karen Primmer, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office. I'm here to ask for a payment for the annual maintenance for our CAD's, our computerated dispatching software, which is by county. The yearly fee for this year into next year is going to be ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. We have billed two of our entities for fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. So the difference would be about eighty-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen and a six cents for the actual cost, but we pay it upfront. And it did go up almost twelve percent this year. We've been trying to navigate that as each year it goes up. I'm here to ask for it, so any questions?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Dispatch payment, Hermiston.
So the second is for Hermiston. It's the same maintenance, yearly maintenance. Theirs is a little bit different. They're using a platform within the CAD system that's called IRIMs. They use it only internally on their phones. They no longer have desktop or anything. And that cost this year is going to be thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
All right, thank you very much.
Community Corrections Plan.
Morning, District General, Mayor Director, Community Corrections. You guys need a give you all a packet of the Community Corrections Plan, which is really the conclusion of the conversation that begins during budget session. So at the end of the legislative session, once the funds are all approved, the county is entering to an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon. All those funds are dispersed locally, basically broken out by each program description. Have a packet with all of the various program descriptions and how all of the state funds are allocated. So what I'm here to do today is answer any questions you might have on that and seek your signature on a letter of approval of how those funds are being distributed, so I can formally provide any.
Fascinating reading.
Fascinating to write.
My only comment is that I don't think people realize everything that you do in your, for the community, the safety of the community. I think that that's, you know, in a way, that's too bad, just because I know funding at times is a struggle, and it shouldn't be, just because you do good work.
I appreciate that, but yes, we are. We do, you know, we're a lot of people doing the work. A lot of people dedicated to the work. Look, my staff and the tenure of the people we have, we've got a lot of people that do it in a long time, and things like just the day-to-day supervision of the work we do, the work we do with things like the fair and the roundup. Public safety components that we're committed to, and trying to create programs and services that give those folks that are on our supervision and have interest in getting into a different lifestyle, and given the opportunity for that to occur, while at the same time providing accountability and public safety is important to us. It's a difficult, well, for this biennial, but we do carry into these things cash reserves for times like this. And I hope that we will advocate for ourselves and you all, through your ability to do things politically that sometimes us as county employees can't, will be important to try to get the legislature to follow their own commitments, follow their own funding structure that they created, but yet don't follow us.
I would move approval and authorize your sign.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Neil, and thank you group for all their help there, too.
ATV road use.
Okay, back in two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Commissioners at that time adopted an ordinance allowing some county roads to be used for ATV. It was a test for about a year, and due to the lack of use of the permitting process and desirability of it, it's sensitive. The interest has been renewed in allowing county roads for some altering vehicles. What's before the board is a draft of an Eastman is based on the one that was formulated in two thousand and sixteen and adopted by the board. It's slightly revised, but the way it's proposed is only a portion of the county. Funded in two thousand and sixteen. The extent of the use that you had proposed in a new ordinance is discussion. And that's what's before the board now. Just discuss the current proposed ordinance, what changes you might want to see, if there's any support for an ordinance moving forward. If you do want to move forward with anything, there will be a future of these Republican would work and ordinance would be considered in these two readings. So the matter is here now, just before the board, to discuss how you'd like to proceed on the draft.
I just have one clarifying question. I've had a few people come to me and say that any action we took, the concern would be that there are some cities in the county that approved ATV use for towns. This would not affect that.
No. The county, the Board of Commissioners do not have any authority on roads that are outside the county roads.
County roads.
Any state highways, any private lanes. Is drafted, it does not apply to any public.
Excludes county roads within city limits?
Yes. The way it's proposed, it really aren't any roads.
Where it's proposed, yeah. That's true.
I know that was a concern that people had, that any action we took would remove that authority from the cities.
Yeah.
I knew the answer. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people heard that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on this?
I'll say something. Union County Sheriff Cody Bowen. As some of you know, we enacted a county road. Two years ago, and as being in law enforcement, I was looking to begin with the increased. Versus ATV issues. I can pleasantly say that we have absolutely zero injuries or incidents related to any ATV accidents based off of the effect of the ordinance. We have had ATV fractures, fatalities. We can't be in the Forest Service stuff, but not at the records. It's the ordinance, so. Tourism, it's been for a lot of local folks to access our recreational areas and our mountains. It's here so far. From a law enforcement perspective, on that side of the hill, it's been positive.
I really appreciate that feedback. That means a lot, Cam.
Any questions at all?
Wade Robertson, I'm a Hermiston resident, recently purchased some property in Ukiah. And.
What is your address?
Oh, two-four-eight-seven Northwest Valley View Drive, Hermiston, Oregon. I apologize for coming in with lack of information on some of this. The only thing that I would be concerned with is being prior ATV patrol with the Umatilla County Sheriff's Office. I did a lot of patrol on the county roads. I did a lot of, I mean, from all over the county. The county's huge, and a lot of times I was there by myself, and a lot of times I was there enforcing things and making that decision. I would agree with the sheriff that throughout those ten years that I was involved with that, very, very little use, or very, very little incidents, irresponsible driving, DUI stuff, that kind of stuff was at minimal. So with that, I'm, basically, what I'm asking is, in the proposal, do we have a, something in it that says what the damages, proposed damages that these ATVs are causing on the county roads versus normal vehicle use? Anything like that, where we can do a comparable to get the thing passed or not pass on as far as the ordinances go? I learned this morning that, yes, the cities can make their own decisions on what goes on in those, but I would like to see some type of comparable on ATV use versus normal vehicle use and examples of those that would, I guess, lean one way or the other.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, just a moment, though.
Okay.
Does she want to go first?
You go ahead. You're here.
Okay, I'm Gary Goodwin from Elk Tree, Western Oregon. Live at three-eleven Southeast Fifteenth Avenue, and I'm acquainted with all of you. First, I want to commend you, Cindy, for bringing this forward. Take some of the things that you have in your, whatever you want to call it, need to be changed, but it's a start, and that's what we ask for. Things in yours that I don't agree with are no daylight hours. Daylight hours. I've got. Class four. And in your deal here, you need to separate class one, two, and four. Because class four, you're talking about helmets for all in here and everything. I've got roll cage better than your cop cars have. And I don't ride fast enough to roll anything. And secondly, I'm, I ride Idaho, Montana, Wyoming, and Utah. Coming back to my own home state, I have to fight with my county to ride the roads. I don't agree with that at all. In your deal, you have described the east side of Highway twelve and the north side of two oh four. That's all fine and dandy for us to live right there. I have property, and I like to ride out of Ukiah. And so I want the Yellow Jacket, the Mossy Road, all that opened up up there. Why are we doing this just in one corner? Just the entire.
That was what was in the ordinance in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
So that's why we're here, is to discuss opening that up. Mr. Goodman, you're not the only person that wants that big blue cut in Ukiah.
Well, it's just a lot of riding.
Well, in other places, too.
It's a lot of riding, and they have a pretty nice ATV park if somebody wants hookups and everything, right there in Ukiah. And you're welcome to ride in Ukiah. You just get a bite right outside the city limits. They don't want you. And. Basically, what I'm saying is, please include us in your inputs and everything, and separate those classes, because they don't fit. I know recently here, they airlifted a kid on an ATV. I mean, he was thirteen years old, riding an ATV on the Alba Road out of Ukiah. What's he doing? He's out there spinning donuts in there. He has no supervision. He don't own the rig. So I've heard that the owner of that rig got fined, and I'm all behind that. Turn these kids out and start spinning those broodies in the road. Tommy Fellows loves take pictures of those, and he wants to fall back to all of us. And that's not true. My high-speed riding, to me, is twenty mile an hour. Most of mine is from five to twelve, because I'm enjoying what I'm seeing out there. The daylight hours. The daylight hour thing, I don't agree with. And, please keep me on your mental list, because I got a lot of input.
Appreciate your input, that's for sure. Anyone else? Sir, you know, do you want to wait just a second, because we should probably grab this person online? Hang on, just a second. Who was online that wanted to speak?
It's me, Susan.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, so I've submitted written comments, I hope you got them.
You need your full name and address?
Oh, Susan Byrd, P.O. Box 236, Ukiah.
Thank you, go ahead.
So in addition to that written comment, I'll just summarize here the reasons that I oppose this ordinance. For the last five years, people have been riding illegally on Hitaway Springs Road out of Ukiah to the Forest Service. I've interacted with the Sheriff's Department hundreds of times to get enforcement, which has never occurred. It's very difficult to enforce this activity, because by the time they reach these areas, the people are gone, even if I provide them with photographs, it's difficult to identify and contact these people. I am zoned EFU with a critical wildlife overlay, I'm the largest landowner on this road. I have never been contacted as a stakeholder to participate in any of these conversations. I've been working on this since George Murdoch was on the board. And I'm going to just recap real quick. Operating ATVs of any class is in violation of the manufacturer's recommendations. There are no benefits to the greater good, the only benefit is personal gratification of the operator, rider. This is not grounds to approve an ordinance that will increase injury, accident, and death, and not provide for improved public safety. There will be pollution, noise pollution, lights, dust, and the spread of invasive disease, invasive weeds. It interferes and conflicts with designated zoning and existing use. It increases the risk for human-caused wildfire. Often alcohol, guns, and additional passengers accompany the rider. There are many additional negative impacts without any positive benefits, and I'll remind everybody that driving is a privilege, it is not a right, and just because you purchase one of these vehicles does not give you a right for access anywhere. Also, in Umatilla County, we have myriad opportunities to ride these things legally and safely in designated parks and trails on public lands. I'll leave the rest of my comment and writing, and I'll see you on the 18th to give you a lot of photos of what's been going on up here that tell the story. I appreciate the opportunity to comment, thank you.
My name's Randy Norton, I live at 404 North Hermiston Avenue, Ukiah, Oregon. This woman that just spoke is a problem there. She has interfered. I think, though, that by letting us access the forest lands, then. Not him.
Mr. Norton, did you give your address?
404 North.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Doran.
First of all, I, I'm not quite sure what the goal of this is. Is it for recreation, transportation? Trying to figure that part out.
Definitely recreation.
So it's recreation-based? And I have no objection to recreation-based on recreation roads, I have a lot of objection on agricultural roads. So, we already allow farmers access with their ATVs and UTVs. What I would like to see, if this moves forward, is designated recreation roads, for a lot of different reasons. But I have some other, other items. This ordinance is based on 40 miles an hour, or neighboring states, including the ones that were referenced earlier, based on 35 miles. First, two of the ones that were referenced are based on 35 miles an hour, and I think there's, there's reasons for that. It's because most gravel roads have a maximum speed limit of 35 miles. So I think that that's something that we should really take into consideration. And then I think that we should not allow truck vehicles at all, they should all be WATVs or WUTVs. They should all be wheeled. I think there should be no passengers under the age of five, be the same rules that Washington has. I think it's going to, I think that implementing this is several phases of discussion. One would be process, regulations, the next is going to, the first part, I guess, would be the establishment of a map of where, where the allowed use would be. Definitely going to have to create a budget for the signage, how that's used. I 100% know unpaved roads, period. I still think, I know that you guys, we've had this discussion, I think that we're going to have to, on our maps, designate or find places for parking trailers, just parking them on, on the side of the road is probably not be a useful decision. Same with all roads, I think, that all roads, if we're going to enact something like this, that all riding needs to be done on the road surface, not in the right of way, not in the road barrels, or even on the sides of the roads, that it should be, otherwise, we're just tearing up and denigrating the town. The other thing is, Umatilla County, in the last three years, has spent just over $300,000 in grant money for digital mapping, transportation safety plan, safe streets for all, and this has not been included in that discussion at all. A huge investment, not including the highest, probably the highest risk use or safety use. What the plan is to implement that or integrate that in, or if we need to extend it contractors, a consultant's contractor, or how that's going to get done, but this is, obviously has to be included in those moving. If it's going to be implemented, it has to be included in our transportation safety plan and safe streets for all, or it's, or those two documents just go out the window. And just for a recap, in the last five years, there's been 82 deaths by ATU and UTV, with 22 of those on road, on public roads. And in the last five years, 1,795 ATU, UTV-related permanent injuries, with 65% of those on public roads, and that's actually twice the national rate that presented. But again, I'm not against a recreation-based ordinance, but I think it needs a lot more work in how we get there. Those are my comments.
Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Going forward.
Oh, can we have you, sorry, we have to have your name and address again.
Gary Goodwin, 311 Southeast 15th Avenue, Meltre, Western Oregon. Going forward, I would request that you and John Shaver. Because I've had dealings with Mr. Doran. He came to my house with Brad Humbert, Kami Sloan, and explained, oh, yeah, we're going to fix these dykes and everything, he dropped that ball like air breath of gum. I've lived in this county for 72 years, longer than any of you, and I just go with him. Big guy to go out and spout all this, but never a finish. And the stuff he brings up here about all the deaths and all that stuff. Because people are, if they have wrecks, they're speeding up and down the road, which isn't legal, get fucked out there and do something about it. I've got a GoPro in front of my ATV, UTV, excuse me, and when I see somebody doing that, total video, and I will bring it right in here, if you'll do something about it. The bulk of the people, it's a parent's problem, they let kids out on these, unsupervised, and you're, you're taking that into consideration, it's not allowed. I don't agree at all, and I don't think one lady out of Ukiah should control people in vast amount of area. And he's on the record of wanting to close all the forest roads down, that's fine. Hey, you guys, forest access for all, I was at their last meeting, they said, "Umatilla County shuns us." I would like that to stop, and I will put them in contact with you, again, Sloan asked me already. But, Forest Service is going to turn around and be opening gates, we want to be able to ride out there and ride their roads. They made all kinds of roads to log, and then they closed them all down under bad situations. That's all I have to say on U2, is you said you owned ATVs at one time, in a meeting, and you were for this riding, obviously Mr. Goodman isn't for the riding. Keep us all involved, we've got a lot to do.
I have a quick question for the sheriff, it's real easy, you don't have to get out of your seat, sir. Do you guys have parking trailers for the side of the road? Do you have anything like that in your county ordinance?
Like designated parking areas?
Yeah.
Very few. We have, we have some areas that, and part of that was, there was people that lived on paved road less than a mile away, they had a trailer, you know, a mile, and drive a mile to get to the recreation, and we just eliminated that on certain county roads that are paved or. I understand the concern about the paved roads especially, but there are certain designated areas that are paved, county roads that allow access. You have our ordinance, so I mean, if there's. Not very many designated parking areas that you unload and take off.
I have a question on that. Can you legally park a trailer on the side of a county road? I think we had this discussion, but.
Yep.
Can you do that? Okay. And then. Okay, but you can pull over and park and then unload. On most county roads, you can do that.
The ones that are.
I want to define recreational, and the reason why I want to do that is, is because we've had a couple of meetings with the Sheriff's Office and, you know, stakeholders that we wanted to move this forward, we've met with the state on this, and our own Sheriff's Department, and have got some great information. One of the things that I want to talk about is, in the ordinance, we talk about kids, just like Mr. Goodman said, and I know in my neck of the woods, we've got little tigers that can barely see over the steering wheel, and they are racing around, and they're not only racing outside the city limits, they're racing in the city limits, and the city knows that, can't catch up with them, and, you know what, somebody, somebody's seriously going to get hurt. And in this ordinance, it talks about, kids have to be over 16, they have to, same thing, if you have kids doing snowmobiles, they have trainings that they have to do, and the state said that they have online trainings. I know the 4H program, they have an ATV, UTV training program that they have for kids, and so, one of my, one of my promoters, or one of the things that makes me do this, is safety, safety for our kids, I think that's important. The other thing is, where I live, we have three tasting rooms within close proximity that, how nice would it be to get in my side-by-side, and cut her up the road a mile, and enjoy, get wine tasting, or whatever event that they've got going on. And I know Dragon's Gate Brewery, Adam Gregory, who works for the Sheriff's Office, he told us in a meeting the other day that he has all sorts of people, in fact, they have ATV parking, and where he's at, out in the Fruitvale area. And so, people use the county roads to get to his facility to enjoy whatever activities they have out there. So from our neck of the woods, yeah, I mean, yes, it's recreational, but I guess, too, it would be travel. And I know that there's other places, I know Echo is another area, same kind of a situation. There are some concerns in Hermiston about some roads, some county roads that are, and I don't know Hermiston as well as I do Meltre, of course, but you've got some pretty high traffic roads there that, you know, should be in the same designation as a state highway. No, on these roads. But that's what I'm looking at here, is, I guess, not only recreation, because the Forest Service, both in Ukiah and Walla Walla, they've been very involved in our meetings, they're opening up additional roads for this, and the folks that like to do the Ukiah loop, that there's short spans of road that are Forest Service, Forest Service is working with them to try to open up some of those loops so that they can enjoy the ride. So that's why I'm at here, not only recreation, but also travel, but underlying is safety. Do we have any other comments? Moving forward.
You want to make a motion for like a public hearing, is that would be the next step on that?
Well, I get, that'd be the question.
So what's, what's ordinance 2025-08, what's that?
That's a draft.
That's the draft.
Could you move forward in its presence of state, or do you want some changes?
I think we're going to need to make some changes in that draft, because I forget who it was, I think it was Mr. Goodman pointed out, it's just a small section of the county that is in that draft right now, so.
Right, and so we need some guidance from the commissioners on what you'd like to see in it. We have some direction.
Work on that then, and then come back to you with the next steps, is that?
I move that we move forward with an ordinance, ATV, UTV use ordinance, with some changes to be made as far as, do we have to define the changes?
What are we doing?
Yeah, this is really special, you really have to take your formal options, if you could just provide some guidance.
Oh, okay.
I would say, let's go ahead and move forward with looking at modifying the draft and presenting it an ordinance at a later date.
I guess my question is, how is this going to be involved in the SS4A, the TSP?
Well, that's our guidance. Let's move forward and make some changes. The one thing I do want to do, I really don't want to drag this out, I'd like to get this, like to get this moving forward and buttoned up. I'd like to get this, like to get this moving forward and buttoned up and only because I worry about the safety of, of our folks out on ATV, UTV. And I want people to legally feel like that they can go out and ride and not having to be looking over their shoulder. I want it to be.
Thank you, everybody, for your input. I think that was very helpful for me.
Thank you.
And Sheriff, thank you for your input and coming all this way over. I know you always help us out during roundups, so appreciate you helping us out on this one, too.
See you in a few weeks.
Okay, sounds good.
Good morning, commissioners. ATV Program Manager. I'm standing in for Dan today, he is out at a conference. What I have before you is an invoice for ten thousand two hundred and six dollars. It's the annual payment for our Helion recording system. So it's over the required amount of best payment for it.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Security fingerprint.
So the, the other one I have is the security fingerprint computers themselves are Windows 10. And so in October, they'll be, they won't be able to connect to the state to push the fingerprints through that system. And so we'll need to update those to Windows 11. At the same time, like to upgrade their hardware, because they're quite old. And so we got a quote from the original company that provided the, or that did our original fingerprint scanners for them. And they said, "We could upgrade just the computers rather than purchasing the whole fingerprint machine again." And the cost on that is two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents per computer. So one for here and one for Hermiston Security. A total of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents. We request you approve the purchase of two replacement computers for the fingerprint scanners.
Had to go just over that five thousand dollar threshold.
We did, we did.
We're not changing the fingerprint machine, just the computer.
Just the computer, right. The, so the scanner itself is still viable. And we sent a request to Data Works and said, "Hey, since we bought these from you before, is it possible to just upgrade the machine?" And they said, "Yes, here's, here's the cost." The cost actually includes their, some remote services, so they'll ship us the machines. IP will install, physically install the machines, and get hold of Data Works and work with them on remotely installing and configuring the software.
Approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded. I do have a question. Do you still use ink?
No, they're, they are a, like a, almost just like a scanner that you'd use for paper. There's a little bit more tactile to it.
Right.
But it's just a little box that has a. I want to say a laser reader in it, basically.
I wondered if they'd moved ahead since.
Been lost to be arrested.
Yeah, no kidding.
So they'll do the scan, and then they actually print out the fingerprint card. So if somebody needs, like if you're doing a CHL, they, they can scan it on a computer, just like you would scan a piece of paper and then print that on a, a little card.
Okay, well, thank you. That's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Riley.
This is before the board for consideration of basically a condemnation by ODOT. As part of their curb replacement project, they're gonna replace the sidewalk on the southeast corner of the courthouse. That will require additional seventeen square feet of permanent easement. There will be a temporary one for a hundred and twenty-two square feet. And for to compensate the county for that, for the use and the damages to the sprinkler system.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes, thank you. Public health contract.
Good morning, Commissioner, Alicia Lundgren, Deputy Director of the Public Health. This item before you is a contract for, with a media producer for Spanish-language advertisements, both radio and television, which is in addition, this year, last year it was radio only. We've had this ongoing contract for Spanish media for a few years now. This year, it's revising the radio stations a little bit, adding television, and continuing our one-hour interview once a month with our director, Joe Kamara. This contract that's being proposed totals for the year at fifty thousand seven hundred dollars and is all gonna be paid for through a program element, I mean, from using general fund. Most of this will be coming from our.
We stole my thunder, I was gonna make sure everybody knew it wasn't general fund dollars, so.
Gotcha. We're always looking for that.
I'd move approval of the annual contract of Cougar Multimedia. Expensive fifty thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I want to say that this was very impressive. I mean, the outreach is far reaching. That's great.
It's been a good partnership, and we appreciate being able to give you this. So it is kind of scaling down a little bit this year, just as our funds are scaling down too. But it should still be a really good package on platforms for us.
It moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Community wildfire protection. Can I, no, no. Well, with that, I do have something to say before you get started. What a fantastic plan. I mean, a lot of work went into this. The history is fantastic. The whole content from beginning to end is great and well-done. So lots of detail, and thank you.
So, good morning, Commissioner Sage Long, Emergency Manager for Yumantila County. Before you, as the board chair was talking about, is Yamantila County Wild, Fire Protection and Wildlife. Thank you for that, and I just want to really get it out to the partners who put in a lot of effort, the different agencies that are listed within there. And obviously, the contractor we had out of Idaho was great to work with. And though we tried to get it done within a year timeframe, that was extended due to wildfires and different stuff. So I have learned on these plans to evaluate and maybe push it a little further for that. And then obviously, with the work at State Fire Marshal, just appreciate that, because all of this funding is through them. This did not come out of general fund. So, before you, the approval of this plan. Just some of the key improvements that are included in here are, you know, data-driven risk mapping, so there's advanced GIS and wildfire modeling. Can now pinpoint higher-risk areas with greater accuracy. This plan, as you've seen, has, has not been a change since two thousand and five. This is great for our federal partners, along with our agency partners throughout Yamantila County. It allows them to get funding. With an updated plan, it's a lot easier to get not only risk reduction plans done, but anything that they're trying to treat within the forest. This is kind of a key component of that. So you can go through there and list, look at the projects. This is going to be reviewed hopefully on an annual basis so that we can add projects to that, as, as long as those agencies are willing to be a part of that. And then going forward, we'll try to adopt this plan. Years. Some of the key highlights, I think, that are different are, you know, some of the Louis zones, so your wild urban interface zones have changed with, from the two thousand and five plan. So what we are, if you look at the very bottom, there's, and then in there. But we will be meeting with communities. Before this, we met specifically with fire chiefs and agency partners. But we will bring this out to the community. One of the reasons why we didn't go out to the communities before was because of wildfire risk plan that's been developed by the state and everything that was occurring throughout the season. And we didn't want that to get confused with what this plan was. So we will be holding public meetings into the future, hopefully with approval of this plan, and then so we can add those, those comments from the community. But I hope that, I think we'll bring a lot of funding into our area to get some of these forests renewed, some of these projects done, and overall just create less risk for the community. And then we will be working on the West End as soon as I get funding.
That's the only comment I was gonna make, is that, just to reinforce that this is truly just an East End.
Yes, it's just an East End plan, so it goes up Highway eleven, comes through Pendleton, and down three ninety-five. You actually have three plans within the county. One of those plans is held by Walla Walla though, though it's just because that watershed is. But the, the West End, we'll be working on that soon. Wanted to take care of this one first, as it was later date. So we did have funding, not only for hazard mitigation plan update, but also this, and that funding is no longer there. So we were approved for that, we were looking for that funding and getting started. But we will have to re-navigate that. I have no idea how to do that.
Got it. Thank you, thanks Sage. Great job on that, too, by the way. That was dumped in your lap on day one.
So your West End, so much different than the side of the county. So how does that work? Are your, are your plans, are they totally different? Just looking at, you know, the landscape and.
That's probably why this was drafted the way that this is. Usually, counties have one plan. But I think with the different density of fuels, different partners, obviously, it's completely different. Though the federal agencies do have land on the West End, it's significantly smaller and less fuel than on the East End. And so I think those plans, it wouldn't be helpful if they were all one plan, because it would include so many different agencies that the conversation might be about the forest. In Ukiah, that's not going to really affect it. So they, they will look significantly different. But the overall density of how we correlated this, the formula of a hundred homes and the transportation corridors and everything, will look similar.
Yeah, structure, the structure identification, mapping, all of that will look.
It will look similar, but it's more of saving time, as you probably don't want to sit in a four-year period with multiple agencies that may.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. UCC twenty twenty-five to zero three five, and sign the.
We agree in second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning, Commissioner Bob Walder, Community Development Director. Disney Park, Carrie Walshley, our Tourism Coordinator, is online this morning. We're looking to renew the tourism contract with Carrie for fiscal year. It's very similar to past years, the support she's providing to the county. One new item into it this year that she's been working closely with me on is the Yamantila County event. That's a little further on in the agenda, so I'll wait to go into much detail about that. But Carrie, if Carrie is available, if you have any questions.
I'd just like to thank Carrie for all her work with Bob and the way that you guys coordinate things together. Well, together, with a lot of my input, which are never easy. Thank you very much.
Carrie does amazing work, and, and I'm glad that we're partnering with her again going forward, because I think she's, I think she's amazing. So that's just my personal opinion. So thank you, Carrie, for everything.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
I would move for approval.
Second, happily.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Carrie.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Bounty of county events.
All right, so this is that event I was just talking about. So we are working on Farm to Square, which is an event that will highlight the bounty of Yamantila County. It's a conversation that started with Commissioner Doran and Mayor Keith Wilson of the City of Portland on bringing Yamantila County-grown crops and products into downtown Portland for promoting our agriculture and also celebrating getting Oregon-grown products to urban areas. And so this is also developed into a partnership with James Beard Public Market, which is set to open up next year in downtown Portland. So our event is scheduled to take place Saturday, September twentieth, from eleven to two, at Pioneer Corral Square. And like I said, it's really designed to align with the mission of the James Beard Market, which will foster a connection between Oregon's rural and urban communities through a shared appreciation of food and egg. Great opportunity to highlight all the great things that are happening here in Yamantila County, all of our growers, farmers, and give them a little bit of the spotlight. Looking for a budget of ten thousand dollars for economic development marketing budget, which is funded through state lottery. If there's any question, happy to take.
I was having dinner last night with two members of Governor Kotek's staff, Regional Solutions, one of whom lives in Portland, Amelia Portfield. And she's all excited to attend this. She didn't know about it until last night, we were talking about it, and Courtney was there. She's, she's very excited for this. I think, I think you all have done fantastic work on this.
The final touches to the invitation are being completed, and we'll be going out next. We're excited about it.
Next, Bob. I'd move for approval. Request everybody's attendance.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. Comment on Yamantila Marl Connect Transmission Line.
Good morning, Commissioners, Megan Dot Chessey, Planning Division Manager. This transmission line came to you for the first time in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three as an ASSEC project that you're working on. It's gonna be a transmission line starting at Highway seven thirty switch yard over in Monroe County, cross through the CDA property and connect to the ordinance switch yard in Yamantila County. As part of the special advisory group, Doc conducted a review and provided a comment letter that we are asking for your feedback and to authorize the.
I thought you guys did a great job on the letter. Especially in the comments. You guys say that better than any other county there is. We're not done, anyway, so I would move for approval.
That's second, even though ASSEC gives me heartburn, but I'll second that.
I agree, okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
Mass Gathering License. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Everybody in your department.
Everybody down, y'all.
Tierney Samiari, Land use planner. I'm here today because the permit was permitted to the Planning Division for an outdoor mass gathering event at Juniper Canyon Flower Farm. The one-day summer market is scheduled for August 23rd from 3:00 to 8:00. They're expecting about 400 people max with about 75 at a time. And they have included a summary with their application, and I believe the applicant Bradley Reed is planning to attend it. Do you have more questions, or he has the next?
I thought the application was very well done.
Mr. Reed, are you present today?
I am here. Yep, this is Bradley Reed at 81725 Moeller Road, Helix, Oregon 97835.
Do you have any comments for us or questions from the Commissioners?
Is this the third year or second year?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How many years have you been selling flowers out of there now, two?
Oh, this is our fifth year selling flower. And first, first time applying for a permitted event.
Right, I just was curious, like.
This isn't allowed.
I guess, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, this isn't allowed use in the EFC zone. It just has to go before the Board of Commissioners to approve and get your one-day event license.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What a great idea. I am, I know people that have been out to your event and think it's absolutely wonderful. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Thanks, Bradley.
I just want to say thank you to you guys, and, and we appreciate all that you do. We just want to make sure we go about it the right way and, and play by your rules. And, and I'll also note that this is the first time learning of that bounty of the county event. Sounds very interesting. I think I'll support that as well.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Bob, do you have anybody else you wanted to put in front of us before we go to the next one?
Okay, authorized sale of property.
Okay, previously, the county foreclosed on property in Pileup Rock for the record, the last record owner is requesting to purchase the property back. The amount is the total of the unpaid taxes that have been received. So the county is in a position to give the property back to the record owner.
Question. Record of owner is not who the deed's being transferred to. The way I read this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauren. Me, I wondered about that, too.
Two different names.
Obviously, name is safe.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I'm reading it wrong.
Mr. Cartmel is the one that the property will be conveyed back to, and that's who was the owner when it was foreclosed on.
But wasn't the defendant in the suit?
Oh, the defendant, that's the first person in the list of the names.
Of the suit, okay.
In the lawsuit, they're, yeah, whoever the first, it's alphabetical. First in the alphabet, that's all the defendants. They, they get.
So either those defendants could have reclaimed this property, just.
The one that was.
Okay, got. Now, now I'm with you.
Well, why were the other persons?
When the county initiates foreclosure, it's all of the delinquent property caps that are named. So it's usually like the present one, I think, right now, there's 60 of them. And then, as that goes through the system, they get, we actually took it in 2021.
I'm assuming it's by first name, then alphabetical, because the way I'm reading it, there's another name in here who's, that's names comes from you just mentioned.
Yours is, should be the first person in that.
Yeah.
And that, that was the first defendant named in the lawsuit.
And he wasn't the title.
Particular, and it was not foreclosed on. The taxes were paid before.
Okay.
But in this case, the property owner was.
I'd move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Dan, did you say aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes. Walker Road.
This manager before the Board for Approval, the Walker Road project. This was to replace the original base three of the central pipeline project. Recharge, and what this is, is there are three sites that have been identified along the Walker Road that can be hopefully discharged into the aquifer. Project. The license for the recharge has been approved by the Oregon Water Resources Group, and so it'll be in the next.
Move to approve the water recharge project in the Walker Road area and authorize contracts for revised project.
Second.
No, you're good.
All right.
I'm photographing, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Water intake project.
This has been previously before the Board to discuss. It is to obtain an additional water intake system near to the center water project. Discussing whether you want to proceed with the next step. The feasibility study for this project, as I said back in April, it's been received, and it's a favorable response, somehow before the Board.
I would move forward with, move forward to proceeding with additional Columbia River Water intake project.
I'll second that, but I'm not sure that's going to be. Yeah, if I. I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, motion passes. Letter of support for project. Oh, I'm sorry. Letter of support for.
This is a request to provide a letter of support for federal legislation to delist the gray waters in the state. Gray holes in the state.
Yeah, no kidding.
All three of us should have to be that one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I thought that was interesting reading. I just wanted you to know that. Okay, a letter of support for projects.
This is coming before the Board at the request of Emetilla School District. They are looking as part of the Columbia Vista intermediate, their new school, to have a solar project with it, and they're requesting a letter of support for what they're calling the.
I'll move to approve this letter of authorization to the Community Renewable Energy.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion pass. Are there any comments for the new order?
I'm good.
You're in your turn.
I'm with you.